Where?
Now you're ready.
Okay. So folks will call this meeting to order now that we're on air. Let me get my paperwork in order here a little bit. If you would please stand with me for the pledge allegiance and remain standing then for a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call Pastor Darrell Peterson for our invocation.
Is it all right if I say something before I pray?
Yes.
This is kind of a funny thing, but anyway, I used to come here and pray, you know, on a regular basis and about two years ago, a year and a half ago, they stopped calling me. And all of a sudden, you have called me on a rainy or a snowy, coldest day there is, and I'm here. So anyway.
Goat it. The next time I'm in trouble, I'll call you.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just praise you and give you glory and honor. We thank you, Lord God, for this is the day that you have made and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. And I thank you, Lord God, that I lift up our county, I lift up the officers to you. And Father, I just pray that they have the godly wisdom that needs to be. They have the opportunities to put everything into practice that is the benefit to the community and to the other people. And Father, there's so many things that we can be thankful for. We thank you, Lord God, for the facility as it is and the accumulation of things that they're doing and the plans and purposes that they have in hand. And I just thank you, Lord God, that as we stand together, that Father, we ask them to check their heart. Father God, you talk to us in our heart, not our head. And I just thank you, Lord God, that people will learn how to listen and how to become a doer of the word and not just to hear only. And I say thank you again and again and again, that this is such a wonderful community. It's a wonderful county. And I thank you, Lord God, for the improvements and the things they have accomplished in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up on a, as the pastor pointed out, on a rough day. But I did notice that when I arrived, the sidewalks had been cleaned, a little bit of... The roads I drove on were cleared. We've got a lot of county employees who've already put in a day's work and we're early in the morning. Want to thank them so that keep our facilities safe and our people safe. Going beyond that, item number three was this welcoming of you. Before we go to public comment for items not on the agenda, we have Don Britton here, Director of Public Works, who would like to make a small announcement.
Morning, Don Britton, Director of Public Works. Yeah, this is not on the agenda, but I thought it was information you'd like to know. You know, on the Yoder 201 and Habit 202 Sur districts have been out of compliance. And we're joining those two districts. And it's been quite a while getting this done and for one reason, it's a $6,133,100 project. So we've been aggressively trying to get grants and trying to get, you know, loan forgiveness and stuff because besides the fact that we need to, we've already raised the race once and we'll probably have to do it again to create the savings. Put that burden on those, that's a lot of money. It's going to be very expensive. It's been pretty heavy on us trying to figure this out. So, you know, I've applied for the Small Town Water and Sewer Infrastructure Assistant Grant in the past. And then we didn't get it and I've been in close contact with KDHE on, you know, they call, they email, they call. And I explained to them what we're doing. We're trying to get grants. We've always spent over $300,000 for land to get this done. We've already got it in design, so they understand we're doing as much as we can, but it's very expensive. So what I want to tell you is I'm pleased to announce that we have received a grant for this project for $6,133,100.
Wow.
So, yeah. It's kind of unheard of and kind of takes a load off of just a little bit. And, you know, even though the rates down there will go up a little bit higher because of what I said, I hope that they appreciate just how much this means because it's huge for those people down there. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. We would now open the floor for public comments, not on the agenda. If you have something that you want to speak about, try to, try to hold your comments to five minutes, please. And when you make comment, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Carrie Mayhew. I'm Director of Strategy at Hutchinson Community Foundation. I live at 10 Whitmore Road in Hutchinson, 67502. In 2024, Hutchinson Community Foundation launched the three-year Love Where You Live Community Empowerment Initiative with the purpose to provide Reno County communities and the county as a whole with data and a process that will empower residents to make positive change and boost community pride. It started with a resident perception survey in the summer and we received responses from 1,021 Reno County residents, 29% of which lived outside of Hutchinson. We then hosted community workshops across the county in the fall and engaged 205 people in making sense of their community's data and prioritizing initiatives. Thank you to those of you who are able to come to the workshops. I want to share with you briefly what we learned from residents in this first year and what Hutchinson Community Foundation is doing to support continued progress. The Resident Perception Survey, which was administered by Innovation Economy Partners, asked respondents to select their top five economic and community development priorities from a list. The top five overall in Reno County were, number one, attract new businesses. Two, remove and renovate blight. Three, access to affordable childcare. Four, improve public infrastructure. Five, expand local businesses. Then they were asked, they were then asked which three community metrics they would hope to improve on in the next one to three years, signaling what residents are paying most attention to. The results show that all of the top five progress indicators related to the economy, with the top two overall as average household income and businesses that pay above average wage. Then in the workshops, we asked participants what one opportunity or priority could make the biggest difference in your community in the next year. And if this community was 10 times bolder to make progress on that priority, what big idea would you recommend? Participants then prioritize the ideas in the room. And I just want to share with you what the community shared at that time. Bueller prioritized unique partnerships and better communication, as well as a destination restaurant, public infrastructure, and housing, especially to attract families. Pretty Prairie prioritized an all-day restaurant as well, new business lot development and redevelopment of vacant properties. South Hutchinson centered on redevelopment of Poplar as a business district and attracting builders to sell and or renovate blight. Nickerson prioritized development north of town near the new highway, as well as housing, blight removal, and community engagement and communication. The Haven and Yoder area prioritized infrastructure planning, shout out to the New Grand, that's great, incentives to attract manufacturing, a grocery store or chain restaurant, and housing to attract families. The Fairfield area centered on blight removal, safety concerns, housing programs, and uniting family, communities in ways other than the school district. And residents in the Hutchinson workshops prioritized housing affordability and development, higher wages, blight removal, and community engagement and communication. All of the community reports and workshops recap, workshop recaps are available at renosurvey.com for the public to review. So Hutchinson Community Foundation wants to support communities' continued progress on these priorities. We have announced fund for Reno County grant opportunities to help. In our first impact cycle due February 28th, we are particularly interested in supporting community catalyst projects that improve community engagement, communication, and confidence. Local governments and 501(c)(3) organizations can apply for grants up to $2,500 for this purpose, to keep momentum going. Other grants available now are in the areas of dynamic culture, thriving kids, and strong organizations. In August, we will consider larger grants for community and economic development. And information about all of our grant opportunities can be found at hutchcf.org. In the meantime, we are working alongside the county, the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, Startup Hutch, SCED, NFAITH Housing and Community Services, and the Reno County Childcare Task Force to connect communities to the organizations and programs that can support their priorities, as well as exploring countywide initiatives that can make a difference for every community. So again, we invite you all and the members of the public to review all the data collected in the first year at renosurvey.com and where we'll continue adding information and stories of progress as they develop. Thank you for listening and for your support.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other comments? Seeing none. I think we'll move on to next item on the agenda, determining additions and revisions to the agenda. Is there any comment or changes, Randy?
Commissioner, just, nothing really changed but to move up the appointment or discussion of the medical consultant to the front of the meeting as the doctor is here and probably needs to get back to the clinic.
Do, would you rather that be done right now before the consent agenda? Or, or just move into that discussion now and then we'll go back to the consent agenda and go, I don't see why it isn't possible? So are there any other changes that we should make right now before we go into this? Seeing or hearing none. I would bring up what was item 8G in the business section. Medical consultant. Discussion. I'd open that for discussion right now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Caroline Nichols, Director of Public Health. So you do have this agenda, Ida Emmett, in front of you. So the role of the medical consultant is to fulfill the requirement on KSA 65201. So that regulation, that statute explains the appointment of the health officer and the medical consultant for the health officer. In the statute, of course, we did attach the statute for your reference. With the resignation of Dr. Marshall at the end of 2024, the Health Department is asking the Board of County Commissioners to appoint a replacement medical consultant to fulfill that requirement. The Health Department hosted a meeting on 1/9 of this year in which Dr. Lozo was informally interviewed for this appointment. Meeting attendance included Randy Partington, the county administrator, Patrick Hoffman, the county councillor, Randy Parks, Commissioner and Chairman, Don Bogner, Commissioner, and Karen Hammersmith, our health official. Dr. Lozo received her Doctor of Medicine degree from the University of Kansas with honors in pathology. Dr. Lozo is board certified by the American Board of Pediatrics and is a fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Dr. Lozo has been practicing, has been a practicing physician in Hutchinson and a resident of Reno County since 2003. As a physician in Reno County, Dr. Lozo has experience in pediatric medicine, infectious disease, and has been a collaborative partner with our Health Department, protecting the residents of Reno County for the past 22 years. So at this time, the Health Department is recommending Dr. Lozo for this appointment.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Or do you have something you'd like to say, Doctor?
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. And I agree, this is the day the Lord has made. And I actually said that to myself this morning as I was walking out into the snow. So thank you for allowing me to be here. I had the pleasure of meeting with a couple of you last month and so I'm happy to assume this position if you all see fit. So thank you, gentlemen. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions before we go on? Seeing none, Doctor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
With that in mind, is there any further discussion up here? Anybody want to say anything or?
Well, I would just say I was honored to be able to be picked to be one of the people to sit in and listen to you. And I think you're very well qualified to do what we're asking you to do. You come with high recommendations. And just for public knowledge, you've already worked with the Health Department for some time and have a good working relationship with them, as we found out. And I, and I think you'll be a great fit for this. And so I appreciate you, your willingness to do this.
Anybody else? For myself, I was part of that and then Randy pretty well says it all there. We had a good discussion. She's well qualified. So with that, do I hear a motion?
I'll motion that we accept the
Application.
Application. A Dr. Lozo.
Second. I hear, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Rule called, Cindy.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Welcome.
I hope we don't have to say a whole lot.
I know I could not agree more.
Don't have any major problems.
Thank you. Have a good day. Be safe.
I think we should probably be heard back to the center. Are there any changes or? Apparently there were none earlier and then I was asked about changes. So file. The agenda filed. Oh.
Well, I got a paper one you supplied me with. I took the IT test yesterday and it disappeared when we hit print. So I got to take it a second time.
We get the sheriff to come up and sing us a song. I said we could get sheriff to come up and sing a song while we're waiting.
I don't know anymore. It would be entertaining though. It was a Super Bowl show.
What's the resolution number for that one?
It's 2025-02.
Just thought I'd. We ready to continue? All right. Not seeing and hearing any changes earlier in the consent agenda. I would say it's time to entertain a motion to accept. I would move to accept the consent agenda as brought forth by the staff.
I'll second that.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Cindy, you're under the gun again.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for Reno County with possible action being taken. So is there anybody here for the public hearing on the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for Reno County?
Good morning, Chairman Bogner and Commissioners. I'm Deborah Tufel, the President of the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce. And I stand before you today in support of the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Housing has certainly been identified as a major need in our county. And the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan is a tool that would help provide some incentive for new development of housing across Reno County. I think this definitely, definitely levels the playing field for the whole county to be able to participate. Previously, there had been some communities that identified their own NRP plans, but, and I know this plan takes into account those that are existing, but also takes into account the rest of Reno County. So I think this is a great tool that many across the county are going to be able to utilize. And I think it should spark some new development in Reno County as you implement it. So I appreciate you taking this under consideration.
Thank you, Deborah. Unless you have something further to say.
Oh, that, that ends my remarks. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just say, from my standpoint, it's been a long time coming. And I appreciate all the work done. And I think there was one thing brought up and maybe the councillor could help out on that with the schools and.
Yeah, I was, I was just waiting to see if, usually when there's a public hearing, I wait to see what the public says and then give a little bit of a recap, but it seems like that might be my chance now. I was just going to say, we have, the NRP's been something discussed in Reno County since before I started working here and I've been working on it since I got here. Lots of different ideas and ways to do it and we've really spent a lot of time trying to come up with a plan. What's proposed for the Commissioners today would only be for the county's portion. So it would not, it would not be a rebate of any school districts or colleges taxes. However, staff feel like once we, the county adopts one, we have the opportunity to go out to some of those places and ask them if they'd like to participate. And it may just be a matter of kind of marketing this item and educating people as to why it might be beneficial. But even with just rebating the county's taxes, you know, housing comes up at every single meeting, it feels like, whether you're in a meeting here or at the chamber or at the city. And there's no ones, I don't, it seems like there may not be one simple solution to it, but it may just take a lot of different avenues to try and encourage new housing and this is just one of many. So with that, if we had, if the Commissioners adopted this today, the county is ready to implement our portion and then we'll start, we'll keep communicating with the other taxing entities about whether or not they'd like to do an interlocal agreement and join us or whatever else we might work with them on.
I think we've already got a couple of communities that are very much interested in, in accepting the same type of program that the county does. And I talked with one school board member who's really positive about it too, so. But it was a good idea. I really like what was put together with the idea of dollar values rather than locations. It makes it so much simpler to administrate, I would think. And it makes it available to everybody in the county and not certain areas. And that's been something in a lot of plans in the past that hasn't happened. I think that's a large factor in, in what we're trying to do here. So with that, are there any other comments up here from the general public on, on this public hearing?
With that, I would close the public hearing. Is that the proper procedure? Then I will close the public hearing. And where do we go from here?
Ready for a motion?
Are we ready for a motion at this point?
You've had your public hearing. We've had the publication. Yes, you're ready to, if someone would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, you may.
I'll motion that we move to adopt the presentation, Resolution 2025-
03.
03 Reno County Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion here before we vote? Seeing none and hearing none. I would entertain a vote then.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Okay, moving down to the other business items at hand. Item 8A has to do with lighting, new lighting at the correctional facility. For the record, you know the drill.
Well, I don't know the drill.
Name, address.
Kyle Stewart.
Permanent information.
Director of Facilities for Reno County. So I bring to you today a proposal for the LED lighting at the Reno County Correctional Facility. For some further background, in August, this facility will be in service for 10 full years. And when the facility was built, it used incandescent lamps because at the time, LED lamps were very expensive 10 years ago. Well, fast forward to today, LED lamps or bulbs are much more affordable now than ever. So speaking to the sheriff about this, he kind of brought to my attention that there are some lighting issues at the facility itself. Sometimes kind of obstructions of visions due to glare and just some little minor inconveniences for the staff. But the, the big purpose of wanting to move forward with this proposal is an ROI, the monthly electric bill. So right now, the Reno County Correctional Facility's monthly bill is between $9,000 and $11,000 per month is what we're spending with average. So kind of running some numbers and I think a conservative ROI, if we do adopt this project, would be 18 months. And after 18 months, then we would start benefiting from that and pay back the overall cost of the project. So went out to bid due to our purchasing policy standards and we did receive back two- and we did receive back two sealed bids for the project that are included in the agenda packet. Uh, today, I, I would like, overall, to approve the $34,486.65 bid from Salt City Electric. On top of that, Evergy is running a energy savings kind of reimbursement program through the year 2027. And upon project completion, we'd get around $6,500 back from Evergy for doing this project. So that would bring our overall cost of this project just below $28,000 to replace all 2,112 bulbs at the Reno County Correctional Facility.
We're doing payroll to duck from the sheriff, right, on this? I'm just kidding. No, I will comment on this, because in the production facility where I'm currently at, and the technology of LED is just exponentially better than it used to be. And it, it probably won't mean a lot to a lot of people, but the metal halides, you go direct fire, you go from 2.5 amps to .02 amps, and it's a huge, huge deal in, in consuming electricity, so I think it's a great project.
Anything that would pay for itself as quickly as you say, uh, kind of needs doing. Uh, I mean, yeah, it takes a little money upfront, but within 18 months, you got it all back, and you're starting to not spend those dollars ever. So, I mean, you're gonna spend it somewhere, you're just well getting fishing.
Right, and I do not want to take credit for this, this was all kind of sheriff's idea. He brought the project to me, and I just kind of fine-tuning how it works, who's doing the jobs, what that kind of procedure and structure is gonna look like.
Why was there such a big difference in the bids?
So...
Huge.
Yeah, so the company on bid number two, LED Lighting Solutions, uh, they're out of Connecticut. So I personally had never heard of them before, but the sealed bid went out on the Reno County website for the public to bid on. And so they had to have kind of gotten it that way.
Now, these are the right two we got?
Correct.
Well, one, one good thing about it is the low bid is a local company, and our money stays in Reno County. Hiring Reno County residents and the whole nine yards that goes with dealing, dealing with somebody at home. And the money comes from CIP, or?
No, the money to pay for this is out of the sheriff's jail commissary funds. This is his special fund, they, they make money at the jail.
Yes, so, so he's asking really for no county funds? Just, just the authority to spend it. Spend what he's, what's already in.
Right, the sheriff has the authority to spend this money how he sees fit, but because of the cost purchasing policy, we ran through this process for the commission.
Good, good.
Well, and I've worked with LED lights for, since they started coming out. So after the tour of the jail and seeing all the dark spots and the glare and everything, I, I highly recommend it. So I think that was a great idea by the sheriff to, to want to do something like this to hopefully make it less stressful for the sheriff's officers that are working there, and then also make it so it's a more usable space.
If we're not seeing anything else, I'd entertain a motion. Anybody want to do that? All right, I will do that. I would move to approve the transition to LED bulbs with a contract from Salt City Electric for $34,486.65.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none? Cindy, please.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
Our number eight item for today, uh, gets update from Cox. I understand that due to weather, that item will be, uh, moved to a later meeting. Is there anything else that needs to be said there, or?
It'll just be on the next meeting.
Okay, okay. So those of you who are interested or might be interested, you can figure it'll be coming up next meeting. Uh, next item, 8C. We've got, uh, Hutchinson Reno County 911.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Irwin, I'm the director for the, your 911 center down, uh, in the basement of the LAC over here. I just wanted to stop by, introduce myself, welcome the new Commissioners on board, nice to see you. Um, Randy got a copy of everybody to the report? Perfect, so, um, we, uh, we put together this year, uh, uh, on, uh, kind of an annual report that we wanted to present, we presented this to city council, we're gonna present this to you folks just to kind of give you a little more transparency to the part, to the department. You know, we're the dark voices that nobody really gets to see, but we get to hear, everybody gets to hear from us. So, um, we put this report together to give you a little bit of transparency insight of what we've done. I have actually been in, in my position now for two years, and, uh, we've really kind of transformed the department into, uh, changing the culture. And the most important part that everybody likes to hear is where's our staffing level, and we're full. We've been full for seven months. Um, and we are, uh, we adopted a new policy when we, when I came on board, and we have what we call a plus-one policy. So we actually always keep one staff over budget in line, because our training takes 10 months for somebody when they first, uh, come on board on the onboarding process before we can really cut them loose. So there's attrition, we recognize that, we keep that in mind. So that's very important for us to kind of stay ahead of it, so we never get into a problem. But otherwise, um, I just wanted to, I'm not gonna bore you with every one of the reports, it's a 46-page report. It's filled with a lot of, uh, different developments that we've created, improving the culture, getting the staff engaged and everything. But what I'd really like to stress to each one of you is, our culture changes, that our most valuable asset is the staff, and we built all of our programs around retention and maintaining their, their wellness. If we keep them, we got a great staff. Our average age in our staff is less than 25. The seniority is less than two years. But I got the biggest hearts, they got the biggest hearts, they care, and they really, really work hard every day. Some of the biggest, uh, stats that a lot of people don't understand is, in the last year, we logged in over 2,000 raining hours. We also answered over 100,000 phone calls, communicating with our community and, and working with our partners. But the most impressive number, I think, is that they actually monitor over 2 million radio hits. So we staff that center, three people around the clock, and they're dealing with that much radio traffic and communications. And they do an outstanding job, they're professionals. Where our ultimate goal for our entire project is we, we hope to, uh, file for accreditation within the next 12 to 18 months. Accreditation is a very valuable piece to us, getting that outside party to come in and verify that all our policies, our procedures are meeting national standards. So with that, we got a big step to do, we can do it. We've, we've done a lot in two years, we got a great staff down there. And I invite any of you to, you'd like to come down and see it, um, hey, just reach out, happy to give you a tour. Uh, we got a lot of new technology coming in, the new, the newest technology we just started was smart transcription. And, uh, we were able to actually acquire a 70-30, a grant from the state of Kansas to cover that project for five years. And that actually gives them real-time transcriptions on every phone call that comes in the center, which is very, very helpful for the telecommunicators. And the nice piece about it is, it gives them instantaneous translation for Spanish-speaking folks. So we're not having to get an in-line person to get resources going. But it's projects like that, that people don't hear a lot about, we, we, because of our, our business that we handle, uh, we have to be, uh, pretty, uh, pretty tight with our information, but we like to share the basics with you. You guys are one of the government bodies that, that helped us, uh, you know, survive down there, and I just thought it was important for me to come and introduce myself and stand for any questions that you might have, or anything that I can provide some insight on.
I've got, I've got one that...
Yes, sir.
I need to, I need this information, so when people call me, I can accurately answer their questions. When I call in, when a person calls in to do a brush fire, brush pile burn, do you use the GF, uh, GFDI with the National Weather Service?
Yes, we do.
Grassland, Grassland Fire Danger Index?
I know, we use the, uh, fire, there's a fire, uh, uh, index that we use, uh, that, uh, provides us, uh, the fire index, uh, for the day, which is on a rating of like 1 to 30, and it's rated, uh, you know, okay to, uh, high and low. We use that, that, um, Adam in Emergency Management is aware of the scale that we use. And then they also, by the criteria set up by the resolution of this body, was also the winds and a few other criteria, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer every question about the burn permit situation, but, um, we, we just follow the rules that y'all set. And we use the, the, uh, the fire index off the, uh, National Weather Service to, to determine what the fire index is for the day for the fire danger, and we, it also, on that same website, provides the winds.
How is that different from the GFDI?
I'm not familiar with the GFID, I, I'd have to get back with you, sir, on that and understand what that is.
You should be familiar with GFDI, because we do a lot of CRP and, uh, other pasture burning. And from my understanding, when we set these fire things up, it was based upon GFDI.
I, I do think it's fair for 911, what he's saying is, when we set it up, um, Emergency Management directed 911. We, we didn't, there was, had been a history of somewhat miscommunication between those two services. So he's right, it's not 911's, they, they follow the guidelines that Emergency Services gave them, or that, uh, Emergency Management gave them. And I cannot remember, to be honest, I'm trying to remember what, what those parameters were, because it's, but, but, but that's what they do, is they report what, uh, that's an Adam and Travis question, what you're describing, because they, Adam and Travis said, they gave 911 directions, and 911 is, to my knowledge, following our directions.
Yeah, that's, that's, but I, I would just, that, that was the confusing part to me, is because we were always going on GFDI. And is there, what location, uh, let's say, a citizen out there wants to burn? Where can he go on the internet to find that information out before he calls?
Uh, the, the website that you're indicating, or just go to the National Weather Service, there's a fire index there?
Meet your qualifications.
I, again, I didn't set up the qualifications, I can only tell you, Adam, uh, and, and the Emergency Management gave us these criteria to follow, and, and we worked out a logical, uh, decision-making tree for the staff. Adam was aware of it, and, and we just, we just follow it and gobble with an answer every day. We do it at 7 o'clock every morning, that's it?
I know, but I'm, I'm just thinking, it would save a lot of, of telephone calls and so forth, if, if the, if the citizens out there knew where to find that information before they called in, and that's what I'm asking for, is, is the site to go to that.
Yeah, there, there's no, uh, website that I'm aware of that pronounces that, uh, you know, that announces that information that I'm aware of, Randy, I don't think there's any on the website. I have made some suggestions that there are software packages pretty inexpensively out there that, um, and Adam's aware of them, and we just need to have further follow-up and discussions that maybe we can produce that kind of stuff?
We'll follow up on that, because the GFDI gives you 72 hours of wind.
Yeah. Yeah, well, actually, we, we, on the website, on the fire index that we get off the National Weather Service gives us the next five or six days in a row, what that index is gonna be. But based on the criteria that y'all set up, because there's some, if the winds are gonna be a certain level for the next 48 hours, you can't burn. Uh, so I, I, you know, again, I'm...
I was just looking, I was just basically looking for, okay, if I want to burn, or a citizen wants to burn, rather than me calling in and finding out I can't burn, let me go to that site, so I've got that information ahead of time. Save you, save you all phone calls, I am sure.
We would love that, we would love to, to, uh, move our technology up, yeah, and, and produce that, uh, uh, outward-facing for all the citizens to just see.
I'll work on that.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
Randy can work on that.
I'll, we'll, I'll talk with Adam and we can look and see if there's a website that...
There is.
But poor people may not have to call 911 as often.
That would be awesome, yeah, but we're, yeah, we're just following what y'all set up and, and, uh, and, and Adam and Travis are constantly, we're, we're constantly communicating about this, because there's questions that come up, but we, we review it.
The reason I ask that is because I've had some, a lot of, several phone calls, and when I go into the, to the National Weather Service GFDI, I got information that said they should have been able to do that. And you know, that's, that's just what I'm getting at, is, is there confusion in between here? And if we can solve some of that confusion, we'll make everybody happy.
Love, I'd love to work with you, Commissioner, you tell us when you, when you want us there, we'll sit there, and we're happy to work it out, because, yeah, the phone calls are, can be a little impolite, if you would. And I get the frustration.
I don't want to take any legal stand on this, we got a counselor for that, but I, I agree with you, you, you didn't set the rules up, we did. And, uh, I think it's somewhat dangerous to tell people to go to a website and check whether they can burn, when we have rules where they need to call in regardless, and if you, the standard is what you're using, and that's what people are gonna use, they still have to call and get permission to burn. So I mean, it's really useless to look at a website when the ultimate call is gonna be made through 911, or patched onto the person that does that, in my opinion. And, and to tell them to go look and see what they can, they may take the notion to just go ahead and do it, and it's not appropriate, so.
There is software out there where they can control it, and you can look and say, yes, it's good to burn, it's not to burn. There's a lot of technology available, pretty expensively, and I'm happy to work with Randy and Adam, and we'll see what we can work out for you.
And I would agree, and it's not your fault, but I would agree, Ron, that there's times when I have not, and I, I made this comment to Adam, that there was in a meeting, that there was, last year, there was a, a period of months where I couldn't burn anything, but we were in that kind of weather where we couldn't. And, and prior to the burn permits, we were able to call in and, and, and burn and execute that same kind of thing where I work, we usually have brush piles, that kind of stuff. And so it's, uh, it is a little bit frustrating for people, I know that, at times, it feels like it's a little more strict than it used to be. But, uh, yeah, the rules are the rules.
Rules are rules, and that's what, we're, we're just following the rules. So we get, we take the heat, but we're, we're good with, happy to work with anybody that wants to work with that.
And I appreciate what you're doing at 911, I just want to, I'll shut up after this, but, uh, you know, I, I know we see each other a little more often, you know, at, at inbox or something, but, but outside of that, uh, you know, having that fully staffed, and, and I, I can imagine there's tremendous turnover in that with the stress with that job, and so I'll praise you for doing that, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right.
I'd like, I'd like to say thank you for your job, because there have been a few times where I've needed to use 911, and, and the people that you do have are very professional, silent, you know, nobody really sees them, like you said. So I would like to pass on to them that I highly appreciate them and the job that you guys do.
Wonderful, I'll be sure to pass that on. Okay, thank you very much, y'all have a good day. Thanks, Randy.
Apparently, there's no further comment, and, uh, no need for any vote or anything that way. So, we would proceed to item 8D with our, uh, solid waste disposal decision or, or update on, on that whole deal.
Yeah, uh, Commissioners, a few weeks ago, we had a very involved study session where I gave a presentation on some of the Kansas statutes on solid waste fees. Uh, Director Megan Davidson gave her, um, input. We had the engineer give a review of the situation. Basically, kind of what I, the summary of that was, I explained that state law in Kansas gives two options for charging solid waste fees. One is tonnage, based on the tonnage delivered to the solid, to the landfill. And the second one is a kind of a basis where the, um, it's also based on the amount of solid waste, but it's, uh, the fee is assessed with the property taxes, which is relatively efficient for the county, because we're already sending out a property tax notice, and it's, uh, has a really high, it's really relatively convenient for the taxpayers, because they're already paying their taxes. Um, every year, the county Commissioners review the fee, as part of your budget process, one of the things you review is what the solid waste fee amount is. And that, that's by statute, you have to always look at that, it's been stable for the last several years. We also reviewed at the study session that there's a process that if anyone, because the fee is assessed based on the size of your, um, collection unit and the frequency it gets, uh, picked up, if someone, if, if there's a person who thinks they're being mischarged, they can go, they can call the landfill, um, and get that reviewed and see if they can save money or if they're being assessed the fee appropriately. At the end of it, there seemed to be a general direction for staff to continue the current process as we've been doing it, and because there was some confusion at a previous meeting with the motion, uh, that suggested going a different direction, I prepared a resolution, just so that we have a record, if you guys want to, that says, at this time, continue doing the fee collection, the same... continue doing the fee collection the same manner we have been, put it on the tax rolls so that, so that the taxpayer gets the landfill fee at the same time that they get their property taxes. And if you adopt that, we'll just continue the status quo and the fee rate itself will continue to be assessed and reviewed every year. So I don't have any, I guess I'll, I'll try and answer any questions in, in addition to that. But that's what I'm presenting you guys today.
Do you guys have any further discussion? That's, that's my thought. Probably wouldn't be much discussion today because in the study session, we kind of figured out what we could legally do and what's the least expensive for the taxpayers of this county. And we addressed a few other issues in that study that, just for the general public, that on, on certain fees charged to other counties and various things that were also included in that study and found to be appropriate in, in the amounts and weren't having our, our citizens and our taxpayers in any way carrying the burden of some other counties. It was a good thorough study that day, like you pointed out, Ron. And with that, just wanted to make that comment in a public session here that, that those things that came up in the former meeting were studied strongly and we got answers for it. So we're at a point where we've come up with this consensus and we need to, to go forward and, and give definite direction. So with that, do I hear a resolution or a motion to accept the resolution as, as our staff suggests? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
We got a motion. You're going to do the motion? You do the second?
Sure.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We, this is perfectly clear. We, we was down to leave it the same as it was, except we, we went one dollar a ton for the out-of-county people.
So the out-of-county discussion, I mean, and, and the actual fees, the, the precise tonnage you charge, you review that every year. So you'll review that again here in a few months for the next year. But I guess the, the summary of that discussion was slightly more complicated, but because we take the out-of-county ta, if we didn't take those out-of-county tons, we'd have to charge the Reno County people more at the end of the day. So it's a good deal for, it's a good deal for the out-of-county people, but it's a really good deal for Reno County because if we didn't take that out-of-county solid waste, we'd have to increase our own fees. So it's just efficient to take them. But the actual tonnage rate, you'll adjust, you'll look at that and see if you need to adjust it here in a few months.
So, so the, the, the out-of, out-of-county tonnage rate hasn't changed?
Right. If you, Megan, if you guys want to change it, it'll be, it'll come up in the budget process.
I thought there's a discussion about a dollar a ton for, for that.
It was raised a couple of years ago, a dollar a ton.
A dollar a ton.
Yeah, that's where, that's where you're getting.
I don't, I don't think Megan's planning on requesting, I don't think the landfills are planning on requesting any change anytime soon is what I, I don't want to put words in the director's mouth, but my understanding was that the rates are expected to be stable for quite a while.
That's what she said.
That's what she said when we had, had her in here visiting. I think it's ran very efficient from what she was telling us.
Yes, yes. And so are we ready for a vote at this time? Everybody on the same page?
I think it's just as a way of new commissioners on that, it was reviewed two years ago and, and looked at in five and ten year forward on what the cost would be and what, what it would, what would take. And that's what the fees were based upon is so that we could, looking out that far forward.
That we review it again?
Every year.
Every year.
All right then. Yes.
So out-of-county fees will most likely go up a dollar for 2026. She'll be in April. A meeting in April is when Megan brings the fee. She just sent me a message to let you know she's, is watching. So they will go up probably a dollar, Commissioner Vincent, but that's done in April, separate from this resolution.
Yeah. We know we pick it up somewhere. It's just, with that in mind, are we ready for a vote? Cindy, please.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
My dad always told me it costs you nothing to be polite, but it'll gain you much. Pretty, pretty good words. Human Resources Report would be next on our, our agenda. Helen, what do you have for us?
Good morning. Lots of, I think, great news for twenty-four. You know, our challenges are kind of listed. I'm not going to read through my report word for word, but I did want to highlight a few items. This year was a, a year that we hope we never have to repeat, and that was with our workplace accident, a pretty major accident. So that was probably in the forefront for one of the challenges that HR faced this year. We hadn't had precedence set for how to navigate something like that. And I am very proud of the HR staff. Everybody pitched in. We took care of our families. And I feel like we did a really good job in making it through that tragedy. The successes, sometimes, you know, benefits are in the challenge area and the success area. So the challenge was that we did change a PBM's this year. So there's been a little bit of noise on the PBM side, but that just comes from change in formularies is something that's natural when you change PBM's. But the success is our health plan too. Fair market health seems to be a huge benefit for our employees. They really enjoy it. We get employees coming in all the time, very happy with fair market health and very excited that the commission decided to do that for them. So thank you guys for that. We did a supervisor seminar this year that was a very good success. It was a chance for the HR staff to kind of show their expertise in their areas, for us to educate managers so that they can do their jobs better and make sure that HR is staying compliant. So, or Reno County, HR just keeps you compliant. But, so that was a very big success. And then, of course, HPO has been a huge success for us this year. We have two trainers in our office that are part of the Train the Trainer program. And we're both very excited. We can't wait to bring this into the county. And we can't wait to start introducing our new employees as they come on board to this. Workers' compensation, there's some information about work comp. Unfortunately, this is the first year that we've had reported death. Our reports of incidents have gone up this year, but our actual injuries have gone down, which is a good thing. That means that individuals are reporting when they have a workplace accident. However, a lot of them are what they call a near miss. They didn't require any medical care. That is a benefit to at least know kind of where we're at and where we need to go looking forward for safety concerns. And then turnover rate, good thing is twenty-four is going down. Twenty-two went up from twenty-one and now we're starting to, to go back down. I hope that we continue to go back down and we get closer to our 2020 rate. And I think it's, I think it's going to happen. I'm going to be positive on that. Applications received, I think that's a huge win. Sorry, Randy, it's on the next page. So, is it, there we go. So our applications submitted, you can see it has gone way up. We are, we are doing really well with applications. And I think a lot of that is in twenty-three, we changed platforms. We changed our applicant tracking system to Paycor. And Paycor does reach out to a lot of different individuals. Also, the labor market is changing and so we have more people looking for jobs. From twenty, late twenty to twenty-two was kind of a lull. Not a lot of people looking for employment. We had a lot of people exiting employment. So we are starting to go back up with applications and our new hires are reflected that way too. So they kind of show that curve as well. And then goals, of course, you know, we're going to work really hard to implement a new employee handbook this year. Our handbook is separate from our actual employment policies. So if an employee goes out to the internet, the handbook is more a summary of the policy rather than the full policy. So my goal this year is to take those policies and implement them into the handbook to have the full policy in the handbook. So an employee only has to go to one source to get that information. So that's a big lift that we're going to do this year. And then, of course, kind of evaluating our policies and procedures to make sure that we're, we're being proactive in maybe refreshing some of those. Some of our policies are pretty old and a little outdated. So we need to do a refresh on those. And then, as always, we're always evaluating within the office, our efficiencies to make sure that our staff are in their positions and being able to get their workloads done. As we're seeing more workload in some areas, I think we'll probably do a review of each position within HR to see where we can maybe reevaluate how the job duties go for that specific position. So that is kind of an overview of my report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. We went to the, the annual KAC meeting prior to the first of the year, and I ran across the booth that handles the situation we went through this past year with a loss of life. And, and he said, oh, Reno County. He said, we worked with your HR down there. And I said, yes. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you this. He commended you for the fast turnaround and getting the compliance and the things that they asked for. And so I don't know if I told you that before, but I thought you probably needed to hear it. And it's kind of funny that he just brought that up. And I said, yeah, it was, it was a real tragedy for us. And he said, well, they just done a fantastic job of complying. And so.
Well, thank you. That's a very awesome comment. And I hope my staff are listening. I know one of them probably is, but I will pass that along.
Never had a chance to tell you that, so I'm glad you were here.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment.
No problem.
Did anybody else have any questions for me? Okay. I guess so. Well, thank you guys very much.
Kyle Stewart, Director of Facilities. So kind of like Helen, I'm not going to go through and read this line by line. There, believe there's a four-page summary of kind of the events. I'm just going to hit on the, the high-level things. So in 2024, just over four thousand two hundred work orders got completed with over four thousand three hundred being submitted. So completion rate ninety-eight point five percent, which is pretty strong. So for the, the industry. Something we're going to work on though, in this upcoming year, is seventy-four percent of the work orders were completed within, on time. So if you put in a work request to say, hey, I need to move my desk, that average work order took seven and a half days to complete. So that, that is also a second metric or KPI that we're going to be looking at for 2025, is to kind of get that time down a little bit. Seven and a half days is, is pretty far out there. So world-class would be in kind of that three to four-day range. So, so some accomplishments in 2024. First floor admin HR remodel was a big one. The Health Department remodel project, the Law Library relocation, and then Annex Building landscaping kind of in the front out there. So those are some of the bigger ones to the public. Then for this year, we have a slew of them upcoming as well for scheduled projects. So we have Arcat Carpet and Interior Painting that'll be happening, Emergency Management Storage Facility out by the Sheriff Storage Facility on East G Avenue, then completion of the LEC Elevator, and also Windows and Youth Services. Those are just kind of some, once again, some big hitters. Then EMS Station on Fifth and Adams. So that'll be potentially breaking ground later this year, hopefully. So, so really kind of a, a five-year outlook. You know, once again, not to get too far in the weeds out here, but while the pandemic has officially came to an end, there has been a little increase in pricing for everything. You know, everybody in the nation's kind of facing the, the exact same thing. Everything's more expensive than what it was. So that is something we're going to look to combat with some strategic planning and thinking over the next five years. And then, yeah. So on the very next, I think it might be at the back report actually, is a, this five-year kind of snapshot, this high-level overview of CIP budget, kind of submissions. So once again, you can kind of see there in 2028 is a pretty massive year. So I'm working on trying to balance that out within, you know, maybe twenty-eight, twenty-seven to twenty-nine, and not try to lump everything into one, one year like that. And that can be very challenging to obtain. So before I end, if you can scroll back up, please, I want to give a huge thank you to all twenty members of this team. Being a new director, it has been very apparent that all twenty members of this team is full of individuals that share Reno County's core values. And it's been such a joy to be able to come to a team with individuals who generally go above and beyond and care about their coworkers and the people they're servicing. You know, ultimately, maintenance can be a customer service-driven job, along with the custodial side. And, but just having that care is, is really special and is something I'm really proud to be a part of. So really, all of the accomplishments in the past, present, future, all go to this team. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
What a nice list here that you put together so we can actually put a name to your, to the employees. That's, that's nice.
Well, thank you. All of this is for them. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate your comments.
Your mic.
Sorry about that, Andrew. Now I think we, we come to eight H, right? Because HG has been moved and taken care of. Eight H, Natural Resources Coalition Presentation. There. That's what I thought. So with that, our next item of business, our item on our agenda is County Administrator Reports, monthly departments and so on.
In the packet are the reports-
In the packet are the reports for Aging and Transit Appraiser, Automotive, County Clerk, Community Corrections, District Attorney, Emergency Management, and the Facilities Department. Any questions on anything in their reports? Okay, if not, um, other items I have in my report, and I did put it in my weekly report, but just to let you know, we, Commissioner Bogner and I both attended the Kansas Economic Trends for Reno County last week. And if anyone wants to look at a book that we did get, we can pass that around. But all the trends were kind of not much different than previous years. That our wages in Reno County have gone up a little bit, but they're still well below the state average. There's still a need for housing. There's a need for businesses. I think things look good in the near future, but I think what I got out of it was housing was still one of the big issues. So, Commissioner Bogner, I didn't know if you had anything else to add on that, but I just.
One thing that did get mentioned in that meeting that we had something to do with is, is the Make My Move, or that, even though that, that presentation of our county being put out nationwide isn't complete by a long shot, but they're already receiving, receiving feedback and people making calls on that. So it appears that that might be a good move that we had made to spark interest in getting people to Reno County and expanding business and things like that in Reno County. We've got an unfinished report that's being worked on. It's already receiving calls and interest, which is encouraging to know that. Anything else, Ren?
Yeah, I have, um, at the next commission meeting, the county appraiser, Michael Plink, is going to be here to kind of go over property appraisals, the process. But following that, he's working with Sandra. They're setting up a coffee, and just kind of mentioned it to you guys a little early, that on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at the Annex, Michael will be hosting kind of a coffee with the appraiser to where he will go over the, a similar appraisal process, the explanation that he'll do to the commission, give to the commission. He'll give it to the public and be there to answer questions by the press and anyone that's interested in that process. So Michael wanted to get out and kind of, before valuations go out, because I believe they're being mailed on the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. People will get them that following week, so we want to be in front of.
You might want to make that decaf.
Don't take them. And then during the conversation, Adam did email me that under Helpful Links on the county's webpage, the public can see the GFDI and all information dispatches, dispatch uses to determine if it's a good day to burn. So Reno County does have a link under Helpful Links on the webpage. And it does mention the GFDI Commissioner Hearst. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, we're getting down the line here, guys. County Commissioner reported comments. You have anything you'd like to say, Ron? Randy?
Yeah, attended a city-county meeting the other night. Went for quite a while, so I think some good things are getting worked out between city and county. I think we're going to make some great strides in the coming years. At least, I'm optimistic that we can. But as I sat down in the meeting when I first got there, I sat next to a lady that's the Director of Underground Vaults and Storage. And I was going to bring this up this morning about she was looking from the city for a recommendation letter. They're trying to get affiliated with the Smithsonian for that. And, and I'd like us to do that. But I, I did reach out to her and ask her if she would like to come in for a public comment, if you're okay with that, for the next meeting. I'd like to have her here, and she could explain what she wants. But I'd love to see us all sign on to that. But she'd like testimonials and things like that. Was I kind of sitting and talked to her for a minute and give her a card so she'd give me the information? But, but it'd be a great thing. I think it'd enhance her business and some stuff out there. If we can get more traffic through it, why not? If we can help that, so. But, but great things in the meeting. I, I'm looking forward to, to be able to see what happens with what we talked about over there, so.
Ron, you got anything you want to? Yeah.
Yeah, I attended the Partridge City Council the other day, talked about.
I attended the Partridge City Council meeting the other night evening and visited with them a while. And attended the mayor's meeting that was held up at the Chamber Office. And they talked a lot about the Make My Move. And I would just encourage the small communities, the rural communities out there to contact Seth at the Chamber, at Reno County Chamber, to talk about what their city offers and things that they may want to include in some information that, in the Make My Move program. And I attended the Childcare Task Force the other day. And it'll be interesting to look at the helpful links because if, if, if nine-one-one isn't using GFDI, then we need to figure out where the people can find that. Because I do think, even though they need to call in, they have to call in, might save from phone calls.
Can I back up here just for a second? I'm talking about the Make My Move. Katie Fallon told me last week that some of that's up and operable now that you can go look at on their page. Some of the information that she shared with me last Friday. And so I, I have, personally, I haven't been there. I forgot about it until you brought that up, Ron. I want to go look at it. So they are starting to build that, and I'm great, grateful that you encourage people to look at that, what it's going to do for their community.
Is it on what, H, Chamber?
Yeah, it's on the Chamber. Yeah, she said some of it's already up and operating. They're adding, they're still building, but, but yeah, so you can go look at a little bit of it now.
Commissioners, as you mentioned, Make My Move, that, um, I know we did, at the mayor's meeting, I had to leave early, but we didn't really get into the unincorporated areas. So the commission may want to think, what will the county, for incentives? Not money, but like meetings or different things can the county put into the Make My Move for the, if anyone wants to live in an unincorporated area of Reno County? Because we talked about all the cities, you know, you know, what, at the Highlands, maybe what, what Mayor Moore may do, or at, at Pretty Prairie, but what about the unincorporated areas?
Habit would be one. Pleasant View is another one. Yoder. Richard, you're up.
Well, I was at the same meeting with the city council, and it's tremendous to be part of a group that can actually work together and to see you guys work together to, to try and improve this community and the county. And I, I love the actual, being able to do that as, as a team of commissioners, then working with the city council. And so I like to be a cheerleader, and I, I love this community. I love this county and want to, you know, try and impress all the positives that we have in this county and in, in all the other little communities around this city. So that was what I gathered from that meeting also.
Thank you. Couple little comments I want to make. Most of mine have been covered by other commissioners, these meetings we've attended. And of course, Randy on the economic side. Something that's come up in my district, the local parochial school has been awarded the number-one school in academics. And I think that's great for Reno County to, to have a school that, I know it's in the Catholic Diocese of Wichita, but when that is the statistics used or statewide statistics by the State Board of Education. And when you further that on up the line and compare it to all grade schools, twelve-hundred-and-seventy-some grade schools in the state of Kansas, they're still number-one in math, number-four in English, number, what is it, three? I may be off. In, in science studies. You go back to, that's one of the highest development areas in this county, and that's why you've got a school that parents want to send people to. But it shows that this county has some very good schools, and that's, that's a feather in our cap when we're trying to get people to come here. And that's why that development is happening so fast in that corner of the county. A, a large part of why it's happening. And I just wanted to bring that up. It's, it's, it's a positive for this whole community and the mindset of the people in, in Reno County that we expect some excellence in our, in our education system. And that we actually had a school in Reno County come up on top for the whole state. So it's, I just wanted to make mention that we have some very dedicated people in our county doing some things that should, should be helpful to us in the future. My dad always told us, there's one thing that nobody can ever take from you, and that's your knowledge. And if we get our kids good knowledge, we got to step ahead of everybody else. And, and I just wanted to draw that attention because disaster and medical, you, you name what can happen to us and take the physical things. You've always got a way back up with your knowledge. So get off my soapbox. Thank you for your time. At this point, I'd say we've got an executive session coming up. Just for the general public's knowledge, there are no business items following the executive session. If, so if, I mean, he'll just be adjourned. So you may or may not want to hang around knowing that. So if we call for an executive session, are you going to read the, the reason or the?
I, I emailed it to, to Chairman, but it would be a motion for the board to enter executive session until ten forty-five with the County Administrator, County Counselor, and the Facilities Director. The subject matter would be the potential acquisition of real estate by the county, and the justification for the executive session is to keep confidential the county's bargaining position for potential real estate acquisition. If somebody would like to adopt that motion.
Motion that we adjourn the executive session for that reason?
Thank you.
Anybody else for the second? If, if not, I will. Motion seconded. Do we, I guess we need to vote? Or do we do it by consensus, or what do we do?
You just vote, you do vote, too.
All right. Sandy, please.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Yes.